Okay. Call me in order, Matt's not here tonight, he's out of town, so. Roll call Penny.
All right, trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Trustee Marisak.
And trustee Bettinger.
Here.
Okay, Jeff, is there any public comments that were called in, written in? There's nobody here tonight, so.
He is logging on.
Oh, he's logging on, so. You know of anybody?
I, I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
And we do want to state for the record, just the meetings being held remotely due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the finding that it's not reasonable or practical to have an in-person meeting at this time pursuant to the temporary exception of the governor's order.
Giving it now.
All right. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Or no, I'm sorry, we'll do the public hearing for the 2020 tax levy. Is Justin here?
Justin?
I am.
Oh, there he is, okay.
The tax levy, you just need to open the tax levy hearing. And then see if anybody has any comments. We'll talk about the levy itself under items for separate action.
Okay, anybody got any questions on the tax levy right now? I think he said it's further down on the agenda, so. All right, if none, we'll move on.
Anybody who want to formally quit the public hearing and open the public hearing?
Oh, that's right, it's a public hearing. Laura just mentioned we were open to public hearing. Any questions? Okay, now we'll close the public here. Go to the consent agenda. Minutes of the village board meeting November 9th counts payable November 19th in the amount of $1,995,879 and 83 cents. Water production report for October 20th and village schedule of the meetings for 2021. Need a motion.
So moved.
Back here.
Second. Call the roll Penny.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bettinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes. Items for separate action, back to Justin, ordinance 1896. Tax levy first reading.
Thank you, Denny. So, the ordinance in front of the board tonight, ordinance 1896, adapting the tax levy for 2020. The proposed levy was announced at the November 9th board meeting. Notice of the public hearing was published on November 12th in the Kennel County Record. The proposed general levy request totals $2,252,144 and the SSA levies total $336,000. The board had requested staff to remove the percent allowed under the property tax extension limitation law. And so, the $2,252 reflected shows no increase for existing properties and approximately $24,000 for new properties. If the board has any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Any quick questions from the board? All right, since it's first reading, we'll move on. About change order two for lead service line replacement program, is that Pete?
Yes, thank you. So, from time to time, we'll bring back a, what we call balancing change order for a contract. In this case, normally when we have a deduct for a contract, that is signed under Jeff's authority, but because of the low interest loan program in our agreement with EPA, it needs to be approved by EPA as well as the village board. So, this evening, we have the the change order number two and final, and just for reference, change order number one was to extend the contract time due to COVID, but change order two now is to handle any of the miscellaneous costs on the contract. So, this is a change order to, it's a deduct of $49,836.77 and the detailed items are listed on the attachment. And I'd be happy to take any questions on that. The project is substantially complete, we have some minor restoration to take care of, but we will be closing that out probably this year and and then we'll finalize the village's loan forgiveness for the project. So, but in order to do that, we do need to approve the, this change order and send it to EPA for approval.
Anybody have any questions on that? Is my room manner in that with brand excavator? No question?
Whoa. My second.
It didn't catch the first, could you repeat, please? Okay, Doug, thank you, trustee Marisak. All right, would you like me to call roll, trustee Lee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bettinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right, the next is the naturalized landscape maintenance service contract. A lot of people send that back. Mark, you gonna take this?
Yes, thank you trustee Lee. So, before the board tonight is the staff's recommendation for the approval of the contract for the naturalized basins. And that consists of both SSA funds and general funds throughout the village. Staff put out in RFP back in October for the maintenance for the next three years. Given the information that we received back and after our evaluations, staff is recommending at this point in time that we move forward with PISO and Associates. A large portion of the reason behind that is through the RFP process, we have indicated that we require 10 years of experience in this general area of the or I'm sorry, in the general maintenance of this type of work. So therefore, the low bid contractor that you'll see on your sheet actually falls short of their 10 years of experience. Therefore, that's one of the reasons why we're looking at the second low bid, which would be PISO. Another reason that through the process of evaluating the RFP that we decided to go with the second low bidder was the RFP stated that we will be conducting pre-stribe burns alternating years. And those alternating years work in a balance that counteract the mulching years in the landscaping contracts. So that the way the SSAs don't fluctuate from year to year, so they offset each other. But through the process of reviewing the RFP, the low bidder did not submit their pricing in that fashion. So, that was another reason again that we elected to go with the second low bidder due to the fact that they did not properly fill out the RFP correctly. So with that, we are recommending the approval to PISO and Associates. I'm happy to take any questions from any of the trustees at this time.
Any questions by the trustees? Okay, need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Penny, roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bettinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes. Okay, moving on. The TIF to rebate, Justin.
Thank you trustee Lee. So, first of all, in looking at resolution 2017-003, staff is to review building permits and detailed EAV reports. That information is, should be taken to the joint review board meeting, which this year will be held on December 8th. And then, we will actually bring this information back to the village board after the JRBS looked at it. We wanted to provide this information to the board in before the JRBS saw the information. If there's any questions, I can answer those at this time, but again, we will bring it back again for the December meeting for approval.
After the January number 14 meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions by anybody? No. Okay. We're just gonna leave that going, on to the next. The professional service agreement with engineering enterprises for design engineering for the Montgomery Public Works Facility site in the amount of $284,531. Pete, you wanna take that?
I think Justin was gonna cover it, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Pete. So, the PSA for design engineering for the public works facility site, it includes topography and a boundary survey. There will be soil borings and CCDD testing done. That is actually by a third party. Wetland delineation permitting. Master site planning. This will include looking at not just the portion of the site where the new building is gonna be, but looking at the entire village parcel to determine where there needs to be asphalt or where asphalt needs to be removed or if there needs to be concrete in certain places. And then design engineering for the public works facility itself. And then, design engineering for Ockut Road improvements. The reason that we're including design engineering for Ockut Route improvements is that the access road for the building is going to be off of Ockut. And instead of looking to the Burlington Junction Railroad to grant temporary easement, we were looking for them to just grant the permanent permanent easement and for us to be able to include that engineering, sorry, that work for the turn lanes in the 2021 road program. So, if there's any questions, I can certainly answer those at this time. And then Pete, also feel free to add if I missed something.
Anything to add Pete, I'm sorry. Again, I didn't see.
No, I think that Justin did a good job of covering the, the elements of it. I'll just mention the soil borings are, are for the building as well, so it's, it's kind of comprehensive to the site. The architects asked us to include that in our contract, so that's the reason it's in there. And as Justin pointed out, we'll, we'll have a separate contract for the road improvement so that we can get that installed ahead of the main construction so that they can use the permanent crossing as the construction entrance while the building's being built so that we don't have to rely just on the Nell access. So, that'll probably be one of the first work items for us is to start work on Ockut Road and try to schedule that prior to the bulk of the construction being, being started at, at the public works site.
Will Mark put up signs on Ockut so that people don't turn in there?
It'll be marked as a construction entrance, you know, and it'll be pretty obvious. We will likely would pave it, but not, will not put final surface down. But, you know, rather than building two crossings, a temporary and a permanent, we think it's better just to build the permanent and use that as our construction. It can, you know, it'll be controlled by the, the folks at the construction manager for the site, not unlike what we did at the PD and at Village Hall where there's, you know, that there's control because it's gated and that sort of thing.
Any questions from the trustees?
I was reading, so I may have missed it, but when is the RFP being sent out for a potential CM?
The RFP was actually sent out last it was sent out the after the, the day after the last board meeting.
Can we get a list of who it was sent to?
I can provide a list of who it was sent to, and then we also, we had a mandatory pre-proposal conference and site visit, which actually happened last Tuesday. We had 16 different firms show up. Lots of questions. There are about 35 people there, so, from the 16 firms. And we'll get that, I can get that out to you here probably tomorrow sometime.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a quick question too. On attachment E, the Montgomery Public Works location map, the master site planning limits within the green area, that encompasses the fire department, is, is that something being proposed with that building, or are we doing something for them, or?
Trustee Guyer, that's just a simplification of the boundary. We would, we're not intending to do any planning on the fire department parcel, so we can exclude it, but just as a practical matter, as you drive into the site, obviously, it's kind of, it's not part of our site, but it's somewhat connected, so there's no intent to do anything with the fire department property. So, you know, we're gonna exclude it from planning, but it's just kind of an overview of the area that we intend to, to do work in, in terms of planning, that is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other trustee? Okay. I'll take a motion to accept the agreement.
So moved.
Back here.
Penny, take the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And trustee Bettinger.
All right. Next we have the resolution 2020-25 authorization, authorizing an agreement by and between the village and Montgomery and comment regarding storage. Yeah, Mark?
Pete's gonna start with this item.
Okay, Pete.
Thank you trustee Lee. So, Commonwealth Edison has come to the village and wanting to do some improvements to their Ockut Road facility and in the area of their parking facility, which currently is, has some depression storage on it and holds water, so it's not the, it's not ideal for their uses in terms of, you know, dry outside, but dry storage. So, they want to make improvements to that site by raising the depression storage area and so they can use it more effectively. So, seeing that we had been working on the regional compensatory storage facility, they wondered if they could participate in that facility. And we thought that that would be a good use of of the regional facility so that it frees up space on their site to make it more useful. And we have a, a standing policy in our stormwater manual that allows you to buy compensatory storage at about $90,000 per acre foot. So, they would be, they calculated the amount of storage they needed and then they have asked if they can buy into the regional facility. So, it's the number that they're, that they're buying in, and I forget the exact amount. I think it's like 1.29, if I'm not mistaken. Let's look quick here. Yeah, 1.29 acre feet. So, that's actually their storage times one and a half. So, they're, they're actually feeling something less than that, but we're compensating it at one and a half times. So, that comes to a total of $174,600. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, it's compensated at 1.94, they, they're filling 1.29. So, so that amount of storage would then go into our regional basin and that money would go towards constructing the basin. So, there's no adjustment for, for any TIF funds or anything like that. It would just be a straight negotiation, but ComEd is just wanting to be able to utilize their property more efficiently. So, that's the purpose of it. And as we go forward, we would just make sure that we have that volume accounted for when we do our first project.
I have a question, if I may. With ComEd coming in and wanting to use this regional storage area, does it potentially hurt us in the future where if, as development continues, we may be short?
I don't think it will. Trustee Youngerman, because we have, if you remember, for the three basins, or you know, if we just totaled two of the basins, there was 83 acre feet of potential storage, whoops, excuse me. Yeah. No. Looks like 50 acre feet. So, I think we have a pretty significant amount of area that we'll have to utilize. And then there's, there's additional properties that we haven't explored yet, I think that would be available as well. So, just given the timing of everything, it seems like it would be appropriate.
How quickly are they going to want to do this?
I think they want to, I don't know when they'll start construction, if it'll be this year or next year, but we have time before we need to provide the storage, but we have to agree that we will provide the storage.
Okay, are they aware that we now have 16 departments, including one that we don't know, and it's gonna take two years to get through?
Interestingly enough, they have to get approval through their system, and we were just talking about that today to see how well they do, so. So, that's why I wouldn't speculate on when they'll get a start on construction.
30 days.
Probably right.
Okay, any other questions to Pete? All right, I need a motion for the resolution for the Green Village and ComEd on the storage.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll Penny.
All right, I believe that was trustee Marisak first.
Yes.
Okay. And trustee Bettinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay. Items for discussion. Montgomery floodplain improvements feasibility study and TIF transportation study. Who is taking that, Mark, or?
Pete's gonna handle that.
Pete?
Okay, thanks trustee Lee, I'm gonna share my screen, oops. Screen sharing's been disabled.
Just a second, we will try to help you out. All right, try that Pete.
Okay, so hopefully you can see the PowerPoint.
Everybody see that?
Yes, we can see that.
All right, let me start from the beginning. Okay, so hopefully you can see just the cover sheet. So, I'm not gonna spend a long time, I know you're gonna be disappointed, but just wanted to circle back to the two studies that we've gone through because there's some decision points that we're gonna have for the village board. I don't want to get into the meteor topics tonight, but I do want to talk about a couple of stormwater issues because it's, it's kind of pertinent to the Commonwealth Edison East agreement that we just entered into. So, you might recall, we had identified 10 different projects and we went through those in detail in both the transportation and the floodplain improvements study. And we had listed, you know, number one was the floodplain and drainage improvements, and then we went into some detail on those, and that's what I want to circle back to. Of course, the Mulberry extension, we'll have to come back to discuss that in more detail. We have to decide how we're gonna get public input and things like that. And then, the other projects are somewhat gonna be development driven for timing, but you know, the Nell Road extension to Commerce has been a project we talked about that would be beneficial to the TIF area and would be, would connect Nell to Ockut, which I think would be a real benefit. And then the water main replacement on Orchard, on the, sorry, the Ockut section from Orchard to Commerce is to be in preparation for doing widening on Ockut. And then, of course, number, project number five would be that widening project. And then six would be the second phase, if we get there, hopefully we'll have the resources where we have the water main replacement from Commerce 31 and then Ockut Road improvements from Commerce 31. And then, as warrants allow and funding is available, the Nell Orchard intersection signalization. And then we did opt to put the Nell Road extension on, on a back burner because it's just the complexity of the crossing for the Sugar Dome. And then, we had consensus to abandon the Edgelon extension north, which didn't add any value to the TIF. So, where I want to just focus in on is the floodplain and drainage improvements. There's a range of costs because it's still pending on how much comp storage area or detention storage area we build, and that's gonna be driven by anticipated projects, things like that. But what I wanted to talk about specifically is some of the, the prep work that needs to be done. And really, that's talking about the storms sewer project. So, in order for that corridor to drain properly, we need to replace the, the field tile system that's damaged and broken and, you know, is, is well past its design life. So, we'd like to just concur that doing work, you know, constructing the south storm sewer, getting a wetland, formal wetland delineation, I'll, I'll circle back to that item, and then starting also on the north storm sewer planning is consistent with what the board's direction is. If we don't do any other projects, I really think it's important that the storm sewer be in place because we really need to replace that field tile system. We've had deteriorating drainage in that corridor for a long time. And I know that many of you can recall when it used to be farmed and it used to be more or less dry in that corridor and over time, it's, it's, it's gotten to be somewhat of a drainage nuisance and it, it doesn't, you know, function very well and it's a nuisance. But in addition, we can't really accommodate low flows from our detention basins very well if we don't have that storm sewer system in place. So, we'd like to continue moving forward and start bringing projects back for approval to the board, starting with some design on the south storm sewer project. And then, the wetland delineation, we did a preliminary determination, but since we made our preliminary determination, the rules have changed and we believe that the section of the, this corridor will not be under Corps of Engineers jurisdiction, but will be under the King County Stormwater Ordinance, which is administered by the village. And so, as you might expect, the permitting will be a lot more streamlined if we are able to get a favorable determination. So, we want to move forward with that before something might- with that before something might change again, so that we have our determination lock for five years. And then again, just so we're in a position to to react to economic development when it happens, we'd like to start work also on this north storm sewer and or drain tile repairs in the interim, but again, to try to start restoring drainage, so that if we're going to do any earthwork in the corridor, we've got the area dried out as much as we can, so it's more efficient and more practical to do it, so I wanted to get just consensus if, and again, we'll bring back, you know, projects for final approval, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody's okay with just generally moving forward with some of the storm sewer improvements and bringing those back to you in the future meetings, either in December or January.
Anybody got any questions for Pete on some of this? If not, I've got one real quick, and I know last time we talked about Nell Road going west, and we said no more, but I understand somebody would like it to go another 200 feet on Nell Road, just to push it a little more west. Is that a problem without hitting wetland?
No, that that that's what's anticipated is that the, let's say, the the west side of Nell, where, you know, we used to call it United United Drive, that section of Nell Road would be extended into the TIF property, or it'll be extended into the the Montgomery Business Center property to serve those remaining parcels, so that is what we believe is the appropriate road extension for that.
How about to turn the other way from Route 31?
Yeah, and so that's the, probably the most important leg, is going from the end of Nell to where Commerce is. That gives us a connection, obviously, then for everybody to be able to to go come out of Public Works Building or come out of the fire department and go east or west and be able to get down to Ockit Road or Route 31 over to Ockit, so if you're going, obviously, if you're going to go west, it would be more efficient to go down Nell to Commerce to Ockit and then go west from there, so it would give us that opportunity, so that's that's a project that was contemplated in the original TIF study, and again, it's going to depend on some contrib, I believe some contribution by the developer in conjunction with a proposed project.
Any other questions by anybody? All right, thanks, Pete.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to stop sharing here. If I could figure out how.
Can you get rid of?
Sorry.
That's good. Okay. Moving on from this business. First, I will say I am not buying my Super Bowl tickets after last weekend, so nobody has to worry about that, has anybody got any newer unfinished business?
So I've got one thing. Under future meetings, we've got a beautification committee meeting coming up on December 9th. It's actually at 5:30 PM, it's for the holiday contest judging. This is our largest event, we typically give out awards to right around 100 houses, so if anybody wants to come out that night, we meet at Village Hall in River Street. I know Doug and his family has been out before, they were out for the Halloween, I know Steve has made it, Justin, I know you and your family's made it for the holiday, so anybody that wants to come out and participate, if you would just let me know, so I kind of have a count. And so we can maybe get it done in a couple of hours instead of, you know, four or five, the more we have, the faster it goes, and it's a fun time, the kids love it because they get to go around and see all the Christmas decorations and stuff, so I highly encourage people, if they want to come though, to bring their kids, because it's just a blast.
Dan, I would say, send me, keep reminding me, because I think I'm going to bring Morgan.
Okay, perfect, yeah, I know that one year she was a little young for it, I think she's old enough now, she'll appreciate it. Okay, thanks, Doug.
Dan, are you done?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of decorations, I wanted to invite everyone to the annual Festival of Lights at Philip Phillips Park. That is a Rotary sponsored event that goes on, we were, the Montgomery Rotary, we always do the penguin display. So if you go through, I'd like you to pay special attention to the penguin display. But we've been out there since the club's been around. It's free to go through it, and normally we have Rotarians out there collecting donations toward the end of the actual whole drive-through, and because of COVID this year, we will not be out there taking collections. Again, our club is usually doing at least two nights of collections out there, and we we have a lot of fun out there, but sometimes we've been out there in really cold weather. Anyway, donations will be taken online this year, but I do invite everyone to drive through and come through often because it's a beautiful display and it's it's a great big path you can drive through, and it's a nice thing to take your family, particularly this year when we've all been inside, so.
Trustee Spurling, when is, when does that open up?
It's open now, they just, the displays Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a question for Jeff, maybe Jared, this past week I noticed about 4,912 little pink flags stuck in front of everyone's home on every street I drove in Montgomery and Oswego.
Yep.
This is solicitation without a permit, littering, like, that's obnoxious, I didn't, I'd never heard of the organization looking to recycle shoes or what they were, do we have any, do we know who that was, what that's about, is that allowed, is that not allowed under ordinance? It seemed a little, quite frankly, just a little obtrusive for the community.
I I saw some video, there's there's some video that people have on the ring doorbells of the vehicle and the people. I don't know if they got license plate numbers or stuff, but it happened last year, too.
Like, I'm all down to to help and recycle and do good things, but it just seems like that might be a process we would want a little bit done a little bit differently, I don't know if you've got calls or thoughts, yeah.
I have not received calls, like I said, I had one in front of my house, I didn't realize we had them here in in town also because I hadn't heard, so yeah, I don't think that would be allowed, I mean, that's similar to the people that, you know, throw the things out in your driveway, same kind of, kind of thing, so we will certainly see what information we can find about who who was behind that.
Yeah, I've got video of that, too, I was actually standing out in my driveway when they drove by, so I've got, I got video of the car, I got video of the front plates and the back plates, and it shows the driver's face. And did you get that, chief?
Sir, dead, I have Commander Diaz looking into it, conducting investigation out of the west.
Can it be, can it be a $250 fine per flag?
Widening Ockit Road next week.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anything else for anybody, I got a quick question for Mark, are you done with the leaf pickup?
No, we're out this week. We will be picking up this week, it makes it a little bit challenging trying to get all the way through town in three days with us being off for Thanksgiving, but due to the fact that a lot of the leaves fell early this year, I'm pretty confident that we've got a good amount of the piles, there's still some decent sized ones out there, but I'm thinking we can still hit it and and get them picked up. We did shut down the back a little bit today, we did a little bit of anti-icing for projected snow that they're calling for tonight, mostly out of just the sake of us being able to test our equipment, make sure everything's functioning well, and we just did the two bridge decks, but it only took a few hours, but we were out with both backs today, and would be, hopefully we don't get too much snow out tomorrow and Wednesday, and then we'll evaluate from there to see whether or not we can do anything the week after Thanksgiving, but again, that always gets difficult as the our contract with LRS through the refuse contract stipulates that we end that December 1st, so but we've had discussions with them about the possibility of extending it, but I also feel like we're in pretty good shape right now, so we'll evaluate closer to the end of, oh, not the end of the week, but middle.
They said they are still taking one bags, right?
Correct, till December 1st.
Okay.
Do you see still pick up bags, leaf bags?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, there's only, I looked on our side of the river, and there was only three on Main Street, and Sherman, there was one on Lincoln and Sherman, but everybody else, like you said, the leaves fell, I think everybody's happy with you guys picking them up. Appreciate that.
I have a question for Director Wolf. With all the leaves that we're picking up now, and I've I've seen the process, it goes through an impeller, it gets spit in the back of the truck. Once that goes back to Public Works, is it dumped and we have a big pile there?
So it gets dumped at Public Works, and we have an IEP A transfer permit for yard waste disposal, so that permit consists of the leaf being only a transfer station, so we dump it out into a large bin, and then it gets loaded into a 100-yard semi-trailer that LRS then hauls out, and they take that material either to and they change names, it used to be Green Organics, now I think it's Midwest Mulch out in Beecher, or I'm sorry, in Bristol, off Beecher Road, and then they also have the possibility of taking it to farm aggregate fields for farmers that have an IEP A permit for putting, spreading that on their farm fields.
My my question was, if we have that big pile, I know leaves, when they're not chopped up, they they prevent water from getting down, and they they become a a massy mess, but when they're chopped up, even in the spec, sometimes we've got to use them for mulch. Can residents come in and get some if they want them for mulch?
The problem with that would be that we, so per that EPA permit, we cannot store leaves on the ground. They have to be stored in a containment unit, so as soon as they're hauled in and they're dumped, and they get reloaded into that semi-trailer right away, they cannot sit overnight for our EPA permit, so that would make it a bit difficult, and the trailer that they use is not a trailer, so it's not like they could dump it back out, it has to go to a place with a tipper that actually tipped the entire truck.
Okay, just a thought.
Any other comments, discussion, anybody? If not, the future meetings, Planning Commission is Thursday, December 3rd, 7 o'clock, Beautification Committee Wednesday, December 9th, at 5:30?
Yes.
Okay, and Village Board meeting Monday, December 14th at 7, Committee of the Home Meeting, December 22nd is canceled, may be canceled, and the Village Board meeting Monday, December 28th at 7, might be canceled to or after Christmas. Being no executive session, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Well, I have one point. I didn't hear any comments about the Jolly Green Giant that took a spill this weekend. You didn't talk about the Packers.
I'm sure, what you're saying?
Luckily you can't hear.
So moved.
Second.
All right, trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yeah.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for tonight.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, I'm a, I'm a Browns fan, and I'm I'm getting my Super Bowl tickets.
Yeah.